And all of our board members are present either here in person or on Zoom. So if everybody's ready, let's get this road on the show or whatever.
Recording in progress.
All right. Good evening. This is welcome to the October 28th meeting of the Grafton Planning Board. It's almost the end of October. Where has the time gone? Anyway, begin this meeting with a roll call of the members, seeing as how one of our board members is participating remotely. Mr. Wood.
Present.
Mr. Hasinger.
I'm here.
Mr. Dalamole.
Present.
Mr. Venkatraman.
Present.
And Mr. Robbins is present. Along with the board members, we have staff Planner Natalia Allward. I'm promoting Natalia. I'm switching you guys. Planner Fiona Coughlin.
Present.
Assistant Planner Natalia Allward.
Present.
Excellent. Okay, we're all here. First item on the agenda as always is public input. If anybody present has a desire to speak to a topic that is not already on the board's agenda for this evening, now would be the time to raise your hand either in the room or in Zoom. Seeing no raised hands. Move on to our action item agenda, which consists of exactly one action item. A request for determination of a minor modification for cellular installation at 29 Leland Hill Road in South Grafton. If you looked at the agenda, it said 29 Leland Street. One of the nicer features of Grafton is we have no less than three different streets that are named Leland. Leland Avenue, Leland Street, Leland Hill Road. This one is Leland Hill Road. So proceed with this. This is an eligible facilities request for replacement of antennas atop a South Grafton Water District water storage tank, if I understand it correctly.
That's correct. One, if I may, Mr. Chair, we do have a representative on Adam who did submit the application, just so you're aware.
Yeah, so by way of introduction, did you have anything you wanted to start out with Fiona? If not, we'll ask the applicant to proceed. Oh, Justin?
I do have one just point of order kind of question for the board is given that this we have multiple Leland streets, avenues, et cetera, in town, and this was advertised as Leland Street. Does the board feel that this is typographical enough in nature that it does not violate open meeting law to take it up tonight? I, my opinion is it should be fine, given the context of what is on the record, but in the agenda.
Yes, if I noticed that the, and the application materials themselves all correctly identify Leland Hill as the location.
If I may, Mr. Chair, all of the butter notification materials were disseminated correctly for this, for the correct address. I think it was just a typographical error. And I also seen Natalia's hand is up as well.
This isn't a public hearing. It's just a determination of minor modifications. So no notices were sent out. It was just the application online and in the agenda.
My apologies for that. So, so no, no notification materials needed, not an official hearing. So.
Yep. So any objection to proceeding?
I have no objection. We could also do a vote the board just because of the confusion if we want, Mr. Chair, but it's up to you. I have no concern one way or the other.
It's a, consider it a typographical error on the agenda itself.
Okay.
If there was any chance that, or i- if it seemed at all likely that someone might want to object to this particular thing, then it'd be, it would be a legitimate concern, you know, in our, our agenda. Our agenda is the only place where it's announced, that this is announced.
Yes.
Um, but you know, looking at it, I don't, I don't see people objecting.
Now, the, the nature of the request too, it tends leads me to think that it's unlikely to, unlikely to provoke any objections since the, the actual change will be essentially invisible to the public. So let's proceed.
Okay, so the, um.
Let's do it.
But, yeah.
Are you taking a vote?
Bob's agreeing. Let's do it.
Okay, perfect. Did, did, Mr. Chair, did you want to take an official vote or?
No.
Justin mentioned that.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, you're good with it.
I'm good with what.
Okay, all righty. So, um, so just briefly, the scope of work is essentially removing and replacing existing equipment that was permitted through a special permit. And the link to that original special permit process and those materials are posted on, on our website. Um, I'm just going to zoom in here so it's a little bit clearer. So removing three antennas, six remote radio heads, um, one cabinet, um, a few other things that are beyond my telecom knowledge here. Uh, and then, yeah, then the, the second line is the final outcome of, of the work. So Adam, I'll, if you are available and do want to speak to this and provide any additional context other than the swapping out of the equipment.
Sure. So the only thing I will add, I think you kind of summed it up very well. Um, and it was mentioned that from the street view, people can't really tell there's going to be any changes to the actual equipment. But the actual equipment that you were stating, um, is you weren't sure what the equipment is. That, that equipment goes inside the cabinets on the ground. So from a, from a visual standpoint, if you're driving by the cell site, it has no visual impact. I guess the, the final thing I will mention is that the proposed work doesn't involve changing the footprint of the cell site, changing the height of the antennas. And as you mentioned before, this is essentially an antenna swap. And, and as I mentioned before, you can't see the equipment because of the, the shroud on top of the water tank.
How does, how does the size of each antenna unit compare between the old and the new?
Okay, so the three antennas that are being swapped out, the three ones, it's 81 inches in height and it weighs 31 pounds. And let me see here, if on the drawing, it actually shows the dimensions of the proposed antennas. I think it's on the, if you go further down in the drawing, actually that's a, that's it right there. You go up to the, go up and go to the right a little bit, you can see the dimensions. Yep, right there.
That's fine, except I can't read it. That's why I asked.
So it's, I'll read it for you. It's 34.49 inches in height and then it weighs 68 pounds. Those are the proposed antennas. And then the radio heads, which go behind the antennas, 17 inches in height and it weighs 104 pounds.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? If there's nothing else.
Mr. Chair.
Maybe we close the hearing. No, it's not a hearing. Sorry.
Fiona, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out for the record that a structural analysis report was, was submitted with this to confirm that, you know, the, the weight and height are suitable. We did not have, have this peer reviewed, obviously, but.
These new antennas are not going to crush the water tank.
You're correct.
Yeah, well, that's the water district.
Yeah.
As long as it doesn't cause brown water or something.
Yeah, let's not talk about the water. So, so it's not for some people, although this, this doesn't affect that water district. This is about as innocuous as a change as I can imagine. No one's going to see any difference. The, the subscribers to the service are hopefully going to see better service out of this. Otherwise, why would the company be doing this?
Do we, do we need to put together a whole decision and?
No, we do not.
I think.
What, what vote do you need?
I think we are.
Approve it?
Yeah, let me, let me suggest that the chair might recognize a motion to consider this a minor modification and direct staff to prepare the appropriate documentation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Here and none. Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hasinger.
Aye.
Mr. Dalamole.
Aye.
Mr. Venkatraman.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. And Fiona will take care of the paperwork. And that was our only action item for tonight. We do have a discussion item, MBTA Communities Mixed Use Incentives for, for which Gabe Trevor from CMRPC is present here on Zoom.
Hello.
Do you want, did you want to say anything to introduce this Fiona? Should we just?
Sure.
Get Gabe, Gabe going here.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, Gabe and I, thanks, Mr. Chair, Gabe and I were chatting earlier in the year because of Grafton's progress with compliance with Section 3A, the MBTA Communities Act. We wanted to engage in a dialogue early about examining, you know, mixed use incentive opportunities in our overlay district. Um, we weren't able to, to jump into it until now, albeit because it's been very busy on both ends. So we wanted to just do an introduction to this, this evening, and just kind of give an overview, what to expect. And Gabe will be able to kind of get into, more into the weeds. And then from there, we can develop a plan, a plan forward, how the board would like to proceed and what the board kind of expects and wants to see.
And if I recall correctly, we did just recently, like within the month, get our, get a notice from the state that they completely accepted our overlay zonings to, that isn't compliant with the MBTA Communities Act?
Yes, that's correct. We, Grafton did receive district approval from the state. So we are, we are sat, completely satisfied now. Um, and we can, that's another reason why we can't take this on in earnest now versus trying to study beforehand and.
Were we somewhere near the first?
In Central Mass, yeah. Yeah, in, in this region. Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's CMRPC for sure. I can't, I don't know elsewhere in Worcester County. I don't know how many towns outside the region, but yeah, you were one of the first, I think the, one of the first in, for CMRPC.
Who was?
We were.
One of the first. I think, I think we might be the first.
I keep trying to say that when people say we're not doing anything.
And you guys had a pretty easy path, which is I think why this is kind of an exciting thing. Uh, Fiona, do you want to screen? Do you want to share the PowerPoint or should I?
Sure.
Cool.
Yeah, one second. I have it up on my, my app. It might be better to. This way. Sorry, one second.
All right. Uh, yeah, like Fiona said, uh, well, first of all, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I'm glad we can finally talk about this. Uh, this is something that Fiona and I just, yeah, like she said, we've discussed before. Um, and I think this could be a really cool option for Grafton to consider and, uh, something that also is, I think, relatively innovative and can kind of expand the utility of the MBTA districts around the region. So, uh, this is a DLTA project. Uh, so technically there is a, we, you know, we should, I, I would have hoped to get started on this earlier in the year, but like Fiona said, everyone's been really busy. But I think, uh, depending on what the board says tonight, I do think we can get something put together by the, you know, by the end of December, early January, uh, you know, and it's a pretty straightforward approach, uh, in the, in the actual bylaw. So I'm sure with Fiona and, and maybe Dave's help, we can get something put together pretty easily. Uh, next slide. So, um, background, uh, obviously the board knows this, but just if there's anyone in the public, uh, in early 2021, the legislature passed, uh, the MBTA Communities Law requiring that these MBTA communities have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted, permitted as of right. These towns are required to have compliance districts that allow a minimum gross density of 15 multifamily units per acre by right. Uh, in, in 2023, the town of Grafton passed a new overlay district, uh, called the MBTA Communities Zoning Overlay District, which achieved compliance through a combination of five sub-districts in North Grafton, Grafton Town Center and South Grafton. The AG's office approved this overlay district in the last month and the town of Grafton has now formally complied with the law. And I think you're right now only one of three communities in the CMRPC region that has achieved compliance along with, I think, Worcester and Northborough. So you guys are in rarefied company. Um, and, uh, yeah, obviously the, the overlay district, uh, part of, you were able to achieve it really easily uh, because you basically already had the existing density and we were able to aggregate it across multiple districts. So some districts have higher than 15 units per acre, some have lower. Um, and it was more or less just a matter of allowing the zoning by right and playing around with the inclusionary zoning, uh, requirements. Uh, next. So yeah, the primary purpose of the, so I think the, this is kind of came out of just us at CMRPC and a lot of the other computer, communities kind of thinking through what the purpose of this MBTA Communities bylaw is. And I think hopefully this approach kind of solves a weird, I guess, dilemma of this bylaw. So the primary purpose of these regulations is to encourage the development of moderate density multifamily housing in communities that have or are adjacent to communities with public transit. In central Massachusetts, this is based on the presence of MBTA commuter rail stations like the one in Grafton, although Grafton obviously doesn't have, they're, they're an exception, you, you guys are exceptional because you can't really develop around the station, but you, you understand. Uh, because the purpose of the law is to make multifamily development as easy as possible, there are certain restrictions on what towns can do, which may come into conflict with related development goals such as stronger affordable housing regulations or mixed use development. Uh, and the, the law clearly shows a preference for multifamily focused development at a, that is primarily market rate. Um, and right, like just multifamily only is basically what the law is focused on. So next slide. So a potential solution, uh, with the focus on transit oriented development and promotion of density, this legislation is in line with the other sustainable development goals, uh, put forward by the state. Um, but unfortunately, it may come at the expense of other types of development that can complement multifamily development, such as mixed use development, featuring a mix of ground floor, commercial and office space with multifamily units built above. So I talked, I've spoken with Fiona about this and. So I talked, I've spoken with Fiona about this, and a couple, a couple of years ago also spoke with EO HLC staff about this. But uh, through those conversations, it became clear that one solution to this dilemma, you know, we wanna, we wanna prioritize multifamily housing, but there's other things that we'd like to see come out of, you know, new developments. So we could develop a uh, a mixed-use density incentive, which in, in the case of Grafton, what I looked at was allowing an additional floor of, to the height limit. Um, if, you know, they were building that multifamily uh unit at the same density by right. Um, so basically, you're taking the, you're taking the uh, you know, the district density, moving it up a floor, and then putting retail on the ground floor, from the state's perspective, you can incentivize that because you're not, you know, the housing is still by right, now you're just I'll adding height, you're not really messing with uh, you're not really messing with the housing density. You know, in these, in these MBTA districts, you're not allowed to require mixed-use development. Um, and you're not allowed to, you know, so this is a, this is a way to encourage the mixed-use development, is to give developers that extra, that extra floor, and then they still have the multifamily that the state is looking for. Uh, next slide. So just for some, I, I think this is just helpful background. Um, there's this article from Boston Indicators that was really uh interesting to read about, cause I, I'm mostly familiar with the central Massachusetts context. But um, you know, like I said earlier, Grafton, you guys are in the convenient position of having several districts uh where multifamily housing was allowed at the required density, allowing simple changes to the byright zoning to achieve compliance. Um, but a lot of other communities have had to upzone to achieve their MBTA Communities Compliance. So I've seen a range of between tw- two-point-five and ten stories in different communities. Um, but what we see for the most part is between three and six stories. Um, so, six stories, I think, is an important number to look at, this article from Boston Indicators spoke about this, but basically once you get over seventy feet, uh, which is around six stories, building code requires certain fire protection measures that can increase building costs. Um, so in the absence, if like, of these height limits, any sort of tall building in a suburb would mostly top off at six stories. Um, and the additional stories would not justify that increased overhead for the developer, so six stories I do think is you know, that, that's sort of what, that's, that you'll see in the, in the, in the proposed zoning, but that's basically the limit we're looking at uh in, in towns. Next slide. So what I looked at, um, there are a few different communities with, with some sort of density bonus, but most of them tend to relate to affordable housing and aren't really focused on the height limit. Um, but, but Province Town does have a building height bonus to, to encourage affordable housing development, so um, it's part of their inclusionary and incentive zoning bylaw, and it's called incentives for the construction or rehabilitation of affordable or community housing units, which provides three incentives for residential development projects which exceed their required minimum one-sixth affordable slash community housing requirement. Um, so they have three, they look at a density bonus, which allows additional units above the uh, above the allowed density pers- uh, for the addition of some specific deed-restricted units. And then a building height bonus, which allows for the creation of a full extra story to accommodate extra deed-restricted units. And then a fee reduction bonus, which waives fees if at least one-sixth of the units are deed-restricted. So I looked at the building height bonus for the, and, and looked specifically at the MBTA Communities Overlay District. Um, and I, uh, it, you know, depending on what the board thinks, we could limit this to certain sub-districts in the MBTA community zoning, or expand it to other districts if you wanna see mul- uh mixed-use development encouraged. Um, but this was specifically looking at getting around some of the limitations of the MBTA bylaw. Um, so this was sort of the back, the, the background for how I came, came to write this draft bylaw. Next slide. So um, just before we get into this, I'm, I'm, so I, I looked at all the underlying zoning to kind of determine what the height limits were for each district. Um, and so if this needs to be modified, if I'm, if I'm mistaken about what the current height limits are, I'm happy to modify that. Um, but this is based on looking at, s- several of these districts have multiple overlaying zones, so I may have been mistaken about what the height limits are for multifamily housing. Um, so draft, draft bylaw language, uh any residential development project that includes a ground floor featuring commercial or office space may, at the discretion of the planning board, in accordance with special permit criteria, take advantage of any of all, or all of the incentives set forth below. So, right now, just a building height bonus. Subject to special permit, the maximum building height for an eligible project located in the MBTA Communities Overlay District may be increased by one story if the proposed project is a mixed-use development, including ground-floor commercial or office space and dwelling units above. And then, looking at each of the different sub-districts, so uh, MCMOD one, which is uh R forty and uh North Grafton Transit Village Overlay, you'd be looking at an increase from five stories to six. MCMOD two, which is Village Mixed Use and Residential Frontage Zone, you'd be looking at an increase from four stories to five. MCMOD three, which is Office Light Industrial and Fisherville Smart Growth, you'd be looking at an increase from five to six. MCMOD four, which is Office Light Industrial, North Grafton Transit Village, and Chapter forty-three D, you'd be looking at an increase from five to six. And then MCMOD five, uh in the center of town, which is just Village Mixed Use, you'd be looking at an increase from four to five. So that's my understanding of the underlying zoning, um, but obviously, uh, I may, I may be mistaken, but th- this is sort of the, the spirit of the bylaw, I think is.
I think you're correct on that.
Okay, cool.
There's a, if I may, Mr. Chair, there, there's a couple, depending, you know, in the MCMOD five, for example, you know, depending, uh, which was overlaid on the Village Mixed Use, depending on what is, is proposed, um, it, it varies a bit in, in the zoning.
Okay.
Gabe, you and I can, can, can chat, maybe.
Yeah.
And, and revise, revise this and bring it back.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, base- that's what, that's what we have today, um. I guess if there's any questions, or if there's, if there's any other, uh, if we wanna talk about limiting this to certain sub-districts, or expanding this to other parts of town, I think that would be useful to discuss tonight. Um, or if there's any concerns with the specifics. The other thing is, um, they have this in the height bonus in Province Town. Um, the planning board could have the option to step back the top story uh to minimize the uh, the massing uh from, from street. And this, this is an example of a, uh, that's an example of a, a mixed-use town center in, uh Stores, Connecticut, uh, which was uh built in a former strip mall parking lot. So I think kind of a nice example of what, what something like this could look like. Uh, you know, in a, in, in a certain community.
Any uh questions, comments from the board here?
Um, eh, what exactly um motivates us to uh be interested in this? I know a chance to get more housing on a given piece of land, but other than that, are there, what do we ta- tell town meeting we're accomplishing, or getting?
So, Gabe.
Yeah.
I can respond to that. So um, so obviously, we are dealing with a situation where we just tried to um, promote mixed-use opportunities in the neighborhood business and commercial business districts, which was defeated at town meeting, but this is I just wanna be clear, that this is not those zones, this is our um overlay, and there's land that we, in our sub-districts, that was used for compliance, that needs some additional.
Compliance.
Uh, sorry, our overlay districts that we use for our sub-districts that we use for compliance.
Already using.
Yes.
Yes.
There, um, so like some Fisherville overlay, which is MCMOD
Yeah.
three, and some, and the area in South Grafton are areas that we are trying to promote and bolster as much as possible, and it's been very, very hard for them to create needed housing, and we're thinking that using this, we, and the board does not have to do this, but examining and researching these types of opportunities would be helpful, especially in light of hearing, you know, we have heard through the master plan processes, and I've noticed at the, the town meeting the other night, but being approached by business owners, like there is an interest in mixed-use, I think we just need to examine this as a, a department and really study it, and how w- we want to tailor it to Grafton. But I think there's a lot of potential in a lot of areas that, uh, sub-districts that we're using that could benefit from um, from modifying the, the zoning to allow for this.
I missed where the town gets anything except more housing. No, there's no, no, no more grants, no more anything like that.
Well, if we, well, we, we comply, so we are not at, you know, Grafton isn't.
We don't gain something more if we do this.
Not that I know of.
Other than housing, uh, other than more units.
Not that I know of.
Yeah. And we saw how the town meeting felt.
Mm-hmm.
We, we would get a, for, for my read of this and Gabe or Fiona can tell me if I'm wrong.
Mm-hmm.
We do get the, essentially a guarantee of ground-floor commercial, if
Mm-hmm.
A guarantee of gr- ground-floor commercial if they are building housing to, needs this extra space, that as we learned at town meeting, that didn't seem to be incentive enough for, for the article we just tried.
That, I know exactly what we're gonna hear at town meeting, when we see that picture of, this is what it could look like. And they're gonna say, that's what you told us the last time.
Yeah.
And it didn't come out that way, so um
Yeah.
Well, if, if, if there's staff time to work on it, and they think, you know, that it's something worthwhile, but I'm, I'm doubtful.
Yeah.
Oh. My.
In the short term.
My, my thought on this, as I reviewed this and as we're discussing, but you know, really, when I looked at this first, I'm connecting this to the master plan.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of interest in the master plan working group, uh, as we formulated this, but there's a lot of interest in trying to encourage more development, both business and non-business, in what we're calling sort of the village centers, now there's, there's a whole nother discussion, which I'm not prepared to get into on that topic, it's more in the context of the master plan working. But one aspect of, you know, trying to, uh, of trying to, you know, see where Grafton develops is to uh encourage and sort of revitalize in commercial development. You know, the, the commercial, a lot of, you know, uh, across Grafton, we've got a sort of an unusual configuration here, where we've got uh, uh, as many as eight, depending on how you count them, distinct uh village centers with a, a collection of, of, kind of a cluster of businesses, you know, shops, restaurants, churches, other things, things that the public goes to, surrounded by residential housing that's at the, sort of a higher density than in the average across Grafton. Now, what you have to do to, you know, sort of focus more development is you know, you, you'd like to get more commercial development, which is one of the things that this thing targets, one of the, one of the issues we've had. You know, we've had village mixed-use zoning here for twelve years. You know, starting twelve years in the Barnumsville area, South Grafton, and we've added on to that. We have yet to see any significant mixed-use development taking place there. We've got a couple of mixed-use developments permitted, but not yet under construction. So, it seemed, and, and going back to the, you know, Fisherville area, the, the forty yard in, in Fisherville. Uh, where there used to be a mill, which we were hoping to get that redeveloped into mixed-use, and a lot of reasons why that hasn't happened yet, but you know, Fiona mentioned that as one area where maybe some development can happen with the right incentives. Now, this is an example of an incentive that has the potential to create some commercial development alongside residential. So this, uh, and one of the things that we're, we've, we're starting to talk about in the master plan working group, is we've identified incentives for mixed-use as something we, we, we need to develop more of. Uh, and I think there, there's, and hopefully, there are more potential incentives than just this. But I'd, I would kind of like to look at this, sort of bring this into the master plan as one of several incentives that we can propose to fo- foster and encourage mixed-use. And part of that, including it in the master plan process, part of that would be looking at where in Grafton, something like this would, could really have a, a beneficial effect. I have to agree with Bob, if I were to bring this to Maytown meeting, I don't think it would pass. For, for more than one reason, I, I think part of the concern that I would have with, with this is looking at the building height.
Yeah.
People had enough trouble with a four-story building uh at seventeen twenty-seven Upton Street, and now we're talking about as many as six. Um, as this, as some of this development actually takes place, you know, and more people begin to see what it really looks like, we'll get a better sense of whether a building height incentive is, is likely to work. But in any case, I, 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 I like what we've, what we're seeing here, my preference would be to include this in the master plan process, so that, you know, again, the master plan is intended to take a take a look at the whole town and try to see what works, what could work best where. And uh, that, that's, that's where I would like to see this go.
And when, once we establish the MBTA overlay, which we have, and it was approved, right? Is there any sort of time constraint that they're, they're putting on us to get it developed? Or it's just me establishing?
That was a very particular thing about the MBTA law.
Right.
You have to make it available.
But. But, so it just, it seems like, again, we have things that are permitted, that haven't yet started, there's a lot, and there are like hundreds of units in the pipeline. This seems like we're trying to get, like, real creative really early, when it's just been approved, we're one of three communities that have it approved, right, so this seems a little too creative to me for this point in the game. And I think the height of the buildings at six, five stories, five stories, six stories, whatever it is, is gonna cause a big debate about compatibility, I mean, once you start having buildings that high, that's where people all come in, so we wanna make use of these districts, right, it makes all sense in the world to have the housing near places where people can commute to Boston or wherever they're going, um, but it just feels like we're, we're getting like, really creative, and we're like, number three of, in getting the zone established, so I would like to see some more time for how things play out, and actually get some shovels in the ground on things like Pine Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right, which is, it's, it's been three years or whatever, to get that developed, to get some of these places developed, see what it's like before we start changing the, the, the bylaw.
Yeah.
I will, I will say.
Uh, I would just. My, my one thing that you wanna figure out is whether someone's gotta buy new fire engines for, cause you know what the current new fire engine is costing? Is it, you, you gotta, you gotta do some research on what might be required for at least one, if not more tall ladder trucks. Um, but the other thing is we don't have to make a decision on this. The, a master plan group can, I say, hand it off to them.
Yeah.
Some will.
Yeah, I, I think if, if, if the board thought this was really, really important to get in place right away, we don't have to wait for the master plan. But, given that we're kind of looking at this topic, at incentives for mixed-use development, is something that I think we need to be you know, looking at very, very closely as part of the master plan, makes sense to me to take this as one of the incentives that we would, we'd be looking at, rest of justice.
So, just on, like, one of Greg's points about, you know, we got so many things in place, we don't need to rush on this, I think just to counter that a bit, like, the Fisherville Smart Growth District that we have in, that was part of this um, MBTA's overlay as well, that's been a desire of the town to have developed for a long time, we've, we've put effort into zoning it, and trying to make that appealing to developers, and we haven't really gotten anyone that's wanted to actually put any effort in there yet. So I, and knowing how long tail it is between both getting zoning in place. Long tail it is between both getting zoning in place, getting developers to. Be interested in it, come up with a plan, figure out their finances, you know, three years is nothing. It, this is like five, ten years that you need to kind of look ahead of for. That, that said, I am also in favor of this as a whole, having. You know, commercial on the bottom, having the incentive of additional stories. I think that is something that is needed in central Mass and is needed in Grafton. I will say as well though, just like both Dave and Bob have said that. If I was to try to present this at town meeting and push for it, I'm going to be having pitchforks at my door. There, this will not pass in May or possibly anytime soon, especially as written right now. So I, I think I agree that letting the master plan take this over, having them. Shape it how they, they, it would fit for our master plan and approaching it when the time is right for Grafton makes sense.
May I just say a couple of things? No, I, 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 so as I was, so Fiona and I obviously discussed this. Like ear- earlier in the year and I, I started looking at this more seriously in the last few months and. Once I looked at the actual building heights proposed, I had the same reaction that six stories was rather high for a town like Grafton. Um, and I, I had the same, you know, I brought it forward as Fiona and I discussed it, so. Um, I do appreciate the, the input. I was, I was, when I, when I, you know, looked at all the different districts, I kinda. Had to stop myself and think, like, you know, I was, am I reading this right? Is six stories really what this would, would entail? And so I, you know, Fiona and I can meet about this, uh, after this meeting. I'm, I'm happy to put something together for the end of the year for the, uh, for the master plan committee. Um, I do just, so the, the Province Town Bylaw I looked at also had something about, um. Like I said, a density bonus, which would allow you to. So in lieu of increasing building height, which is obviously very visually dramatic, you could also look at increasing the. The density allowed on those top floors, which would be a, a probably a more complex bylaw, but that would be something where you could. Have the same density by right, but just on fewer stories, you know, above. And then also the fee reduction bonus might be another incentive. So I, I could put together language around those as well to bring. So that we have a more complete package to bring to the master plan committee. Here are some options and maybe I can find some other things too.
Gabe, I would encourage you to look for examples that are closer to the makeup of Grafton, because Province Town is a seasonal tourist destination. It's a very busy place. Uh, you've gotta find some examples that are a little more compatible with Grafton.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea was just taking that extra story. I don't, I, I understand, um. I understand exactly what you're saying, but I think in terms of creating a, a bonus, I don't, you know, I. I, I, if, if you're adding a story, you're adding a story. I, I don't know. But, but I understand what you're saying. I, I don't know if anything like this has been done in like a town like Grafton before, so. You're, 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 you know, that maybe, maybe it's just not viable.
And I'm sorry, I, I appreciate the work you did. I get you're bringing us the mechanics of how it could work. I'm just saying that. Think about engaging people around this, they probably see something that's a bit closer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'd like the master plan working group to develop the vision that they wanna put in the master plan. That, uh, for what the community would be like, um, like these taller buildings or whatever. And then if they come, if they end up liking that, then the planning board will get a chance when it has to approve. The master plan to look at that.
Okay, that's fine. If, if I may, I, I think that, you know, this conver- you know, the purpose of this conversation was to, you know, this. You know, we've been hearing a lot about mi- mixed use and just trying to kind of. Understand what the opportunities are to, you know, economically benefit and, uh, study it. Nothing is. Set in stone at all, and I think just not to belabor the point, but we'll, yeah, we'll work with the master plan feasible implementation with. I- i- in, and kind of have this work in a way. You know, or, or an artwork if people don't want it, but, um, in, in a way that, that makes sense for Grafton, um. You know, but we're, we're not trying to by any means make the board feel like they need to take, take a stance on it immediately, but just. Having this conversation and seeing what trends are happening and trying to be creative and in certain ways and. So that's, that, that's all.
I'm real interested in the concept of incentives to, to incentivize the sort of development that Grafton. Would like to see. You know, and incentivizing mixed use development in particular. It's a tough nut to crack because. Residential development, that's, that's a fair, fairly reliable investment. You know, you build some apartments, you're guaranteed a, a, a market. You're gonna, you're gonna fill them up. Uh, until such time as we sat, oversaturate the market, which no matter how hard it tries, not happening anytime soon. Commercial is a different, uh, different picture entirely. Not to go too deep into the weeds, but I'm gonna mention this. Going back to the Fisherville Smart Growth Overlay District. When that was first created, we had essentially a requirement, and I don't remember precisely how it was stated, but basically he said. Commercial first and then residential. And Dean Burnett came back to us and said, he's, he can't sell that. He just can't sell that. So we, we had to relax that because. Commercial tends to follow residential rather than preceded. You know, you're not gonna, you're cannot do, not gonna build a retail store unless you've got customers. And the more residents you have around, the more likely you are to have customers. So there is that kind of consideration. That's why you need to think about incentives to make mixed use development more feasible than. Simple, uh, multifamily development. So. This is one potential, one kind of incentive. I hope we find others and. And maybe we can get some, and, and this really gets more into the master plan work at the moment, get some perspective from. People who are in the business of developing real estate to give us a sense of what kind of incentives actually work.
I'm feeling for definite right now, Mr. Chair, but I recall this said this is LPA hours and does the board, I forget. Vote to authorize LPA hours for particular.
It's DLTA.
Uh, thanks, Gabe. Yeah, no, it's, uh, yeah, district local technical assistance, uh, it's a different, um, yeah, it was an application.
I misheard that.
Yeah, yeah, we don't use any LPA hours and there's, yeah, this is no cost to the town or anything. This is, uh. Uh, something that's altered by CMR PC, just took advantage of that.
Yep. Part of this was on our end, working on the, you know, since you're one of the early adopters of MBTA, kind of looking at ways we can enhance. The MBTA districts, uh, without, you know, bringing towns out of compliance. Cause I think, you know, if the town had its way, they would, uh, you know, we could, we could say, oh, we'll require mixed use, but that would obviously put you in violation of. The compliance, so, um, this is also kind of intended as sort of, you know, I actually, this, this feedback has been su- really constructive. Um, cause this is sort of an experimental, uh, approach we're taking with this and kind of thinking about. Is this something, cause Grafton as an early adopter, is this, if it's not suitable in Grafton, probably not suitable elsewhere. So, uh, this is, this is a, this is a useful outcome for sure.
And, and every town is different.
Re- remember, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the rules are still the same. Planning board has to approve the master plan, but what we weren't a, we just never got to where we got. The town meeting to approve the master plan the last time. We would have liked to do that, but. Because of the changing of people and whatnot, it, it couldn't happen. But in developing the vision that drives doing this and adopting it. You wanna remember. Who might be, being asked to approve it. In any case, I note that, uh, we're twenty minutes into our public hearing time.
Is there anything else on the, uh, mixed use incentives?
Thank you for your time.
No, no, thank you guys for, thanks for talking to me. I appreciate it. And, uh, yeah, Fiona and I will follow up and we can talk about putting something together for the master plan.
Very good.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, so let us get into our public hearings, of which we have two, beginning with. Request for special permit and site plan approval at twenty-three Rear and twenty-five East Street. Read the legal notice.
Sorry, read it, yeah. Pursuant to sections one dot five dot seven and one dot three dot three of the town of Grafton zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Commencing at seven thirty PM to consider the application for a special permit and site plan approval. For a common driveway to serve an existing duplex and a future house to be located at twenty-three Rear and twenty-five East Street. Shown as Grafton Assessors Map twenty-seven lots one twenty A and one twenty. Said property is located in a medium density residential R twenty zoning district. The applicant owner is George Aldoui. Hope I said that right. Uh, a copy of the application plan is available for public inspection at the planning department during regular business hours. Or on the town of Grafton website at WWW dot Grafton dash MA dot gov. On the planning department development projects webpage.
Okay, thank you. Fiona, do you wanna get this discussion off?
Sure, yeah. So, um, the applicant is here to, uh. Have the board consider a common driveway for twenty-five East Street and twenty-three East Street Rear, um, as Greg just mentioned. The site right now, um, the common driveway exists. But is, you know, is not le- legally permitted, um, so that's why the applicant is coming before the board now. This application will be, you know, potentially conditioned on those lots being subdivided. And that is why in the, excuse me, in the exhibits, there, um. Are proposed A and R plans as well. That's not the subject of, of this public hearing, of course, just the common driveway. But just so the board has some perspective, this is going to serve, um, the twenty, number twenty-five and then a separate. A separate lot, um, as well, so to be created. Uh, so this appli- application is, is, the site is very specific and I'll, I'll leave, you know, I'll have Norman, uh. Kinda give us an, an in-depth overview, um, but there's a couple of, uh. Things for the board to note, um, namely the, there is, um, a river crossing. That will be, uh, the primary, um, point of, of ingress and egress to the site. As well as, you know, the Big Bummit Brook kind of wraps around. There is, um, a dam and, um, Haze Pond to the rear. Uh, so the applicant is. My understanding is not planning on coming before Concom because there's no construction proposed. Um, but something for the board to bear in mind, it's a flood, flood plain district, wetlands are present. And yeah, I'd like to get, uh, a little bit more of an overview of impervious versus pervious area from the applicant. And, um, kind of fill in the blanks or anything I missed, but that's the summary of, of this site and I'll share the site plan. And the red is what is being proposed. Other than that, I'll think of the applicant.
Good evening, Norman Hill from Land Planning. I apologize for sitting here, but I'm kinda hurting tonight, so I like, I prefer to sit. So gonna give you an overview. First, I'd like you to understand where this is located. So if you take one forty north. And you turn right, like you're going to Westboro, you turn right on East Street, right at that light. It's down the road about a half mile on your left. Uh, currently, um, Mr. Audi owns all of the land you see here in color, plus he owns all of Haze Pond. And it's sewn R twenty, so there's plenty of room here to have two lots and two houses. Right now he has just one house and a garage, and so, um, he said to me, I'd like to put a, convert that garage to housing. And I said, well, you can't have two houses on one lot, so I'll have to cut this into two lots. So we did submit, and I haven't officially submitted the A and R, but as part of the package, I, I've shown you the A and R plan. But an A and R has to be approved within twenty-one days, the ANA. And this special permit for the common driveway might take a couple, three meetings. So I said to Fiona, let's walk through the common driveway application. When we get close to getting that approved. We'll submit the A and R plan then, but not until. So the A and R is in your package. You can look at it. You can see where the two lots would be located. And the area and all like that. So Fiona had mentioned that this common driveway would cross Big Bummit Brook, which is a river. Uh, our client had that bridge crushed by a truck a couple of years ago. So he hired us to design a new bridge, which we did, and now he's built it. And that was all approved by the Conservation Commission. Um, if you go out there, I encourage you to go out there, take a look. It's a nice box culvert. Two sections of the box culvert married together. You got a nice, um, nice wide driveway going through there. So we thought it would be best to make this a common driveway to the existing house, which is a duplex. There's a special permit issued so that. House on, near the street on the right-hand side, um, is currently a duplex. So this driveway is used by those people mostly now. There's another driveway to the right of that duplex. It's right on the lot line. So that driveway violates our zoning. You're not allowed to have a driveway on your lot line. So the driveway on the right there would be abandoned and they would all, most of the existing duplex and the future house would all use this new common driveway. That, that's a quick overview. Fiona, have we heard back from Graves? We only emailed all this stuff to Graves last week. I don't, I don't know if we've heard from Graves yet. So we haven't heard the review from Graves Engineering yet.
No, we have not. So, uh, just for the board, so we, we do wanna have Graves peer review this and, and potentially go out there. Um, we don't have, there's some, in, in the notation on the bottom of this plan, um, there's some measurements, but, um. All common driveways are required to comply with subdivision regs and, and Graves will, will definitely need to take a look and make sure that. Um, from an engineering perspective, this is sound. Um, so there, we're still waiting to hear back and we'll get something in the record for that. Um, we also are following up with, um, counsel about the, um. Um, the legal documentation that was submitted with the application package, um, so they're corresponding, um, with some, some commentary. So those, those are kind of the two, two outlying pieces of this at the moment. Um, I, I would, and I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, you wanna. Want me to kind of jump in now, but I, I think there's, I have a few concerns that I outlined in, in my memo. Um, outside of the kind of peer review, um, namely, uh, the crossing and, and. Fire department and their thoughts on it and maybe getting something in writing, cause they said, they, they said they didn't have any comments, but I just wanna. Um, make sure that we follow back up with them again and just. Maybe we, maybe they can go out to the site as well with us and Graves and.
So I'm not gonna ask the board to vote tonight. All right, I'm gonna ask continuance. You can study this. Um, Fiona, the document Fiona's talking about is the agreement between the, the two property owners, that they agree to maintain this private driveway. And the town will never have to pay to maintain this driveway. The two property owners would, the agreement, it would apply to the two properties and that agreement was submitted. With this application, so you wanna have counsel look at that. I, I, just a few details on the common driveway itself. It comes in off, it comes off the street almost dead flat as it crosses that bridge. It's got a slope of one percent, but then it turns to the right and climbs a hill of almost eight percent. And then it goes up and then once it gets to the top of that hill, it levels out by that second building out back. That second garage is quite a large building right now. He'd like to convert it to a house. But I think you, good idea to get this special permit first. So I, I'd like to just, if I answer any questions you may have, or we can save it for next meeting or?
I have a question or two that you may not know the answer to right now, Mr. Hill, but I figured I'd ask it. I know several years ago, I'm thinking like five or six, that I was driving on East Street pretty much, you know, daily, right in that area. And it used to flood like right near that property from the Brook when it just rises a little bit higher than normal. It wasn't a major flood, but it was still over the East Street Road over the area. My, one concern I just have on the top of my head is. Has the, as a current owner seen any flooding that goes over that, that common driveway? Would that be a? A potential safety issue if ice is over, for example, and, you know, that kind of thing. Alex, I don't expect you to have the answer today.
Well, I, I have looked at the flood map. It does flood over East Street in the hundred-year storm. And it would flood over that bridge about six inches over the new bridge. So it does flood over there about six inches deep in, in a terrible storm, like hurricane after hurricane, you know? But it would go over.
I looked at this. Hey, what, what we've got is just beyond. If we could, Fiona, maybe if we could scroll that to, towards the. towards the top of that drawing. Okay. Are the red dashed lines supposed to be outlining what you're calling a common drive?
Yes.
And they come together to nothing at the top, and yet I think somehow you're talking about common drive on, or, part of the common drive is a portion that would go from there across the bridge, the culvert, on into what little buildable land there appears to be at the very top. The drawings, it's, it's really baffling, almost to the point where we might have to have a site visit to look at this, but the drawings just, are we talking about ending up with a common drive for three properties?
Yes, well, two properties.
No.
A duplex on one property, a single house on the other, so three, three homeowners, three, three families.
A duplex?
The existing houses are currently a duplex.
Right, and then you want to make that
Garage.
Two, two col, two colors of brown.
Garage into a house.
Into a house.
Or a portion of it.
So that's three residences.
Yes.
And now you want to go across and make it four?
No, just three, three total.
Well, what, what's all this business about the bridge?
Well, the bridge is there so the people can use it as a driveway to get to their property.
Which people to which property?
The, the two families that live in the duplex, and the future family that's going to live in that single-family home, those three families.
Which single-family home?
Well, it's a garage now, but the two-colored brown building out back?
Yeah.
A portion of that could be converted into a house.
Bob, the, the bridge is closest to East Street, it's right at the, right at the east.
The what?
The bridge is at the East Street line.
Yeah, the bridge he's talking about.
Oh, that bridge?
At the, at the other end of the property.
So is this supposed to be giving some sort of access to Lot Two?
It would provide access to Lot Two, but also to Lot One.
How, how does it provide access to Lot Two?
So you'd just go across the bridge, and you could park to the left, or you could go up the hill and park on the right side, either way.
No, 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 no. The bridge that you just said, it's in the gray, gray, dark color, at the bottom, right?
Yeah, the bridge is at the bottom.
I don't see, the, the other lot, Lot Two, is on the other side of the brook.
No.
Well, that's what the drawing shows.
Yeah, I think this is, this is
Right here.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, this is, this is what's a little bit confusing, because I think that Lot Two on the drawing is post A and R.
Yeah.
There's, there's
And it, it has no practical access off East Street.
Not without using that bridge, they have to use that
I, I can't hear both of you.
Yeah, let me, let me, my, my, my understanding of this is that what's on this diagram is labeled Lot Two actually includes the garage, so the, the left-hand red dashed line is the proposed line after the A and R between Lot One and Lot Two, if I understand.
Yes.
If I relate this to what I think the A and R says, there is also a parcel A or P, depending on which diagram you look at it, which includes the dam and most of Hays
Most of Hays Pond, yes.
That's a
That's a third parcel that won't use this.
A third parcel after the A and R.
Yes.
Which has nothing built on it, but it has a dam, and there is a, an easement through, following the common driveway up toward the dam.
For the dam maintenance, yes.
But this, this kind of, it, it illustrates the point that there's, there's a lot in this picture, and it's not easy to read.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's a failure, as far as I'm concerned.
You know, it might be better if we just made that common driveway eighteen feet wide and kept it just eighteen foot wide, because that's what you're more used to looking at for a common driveway, eighteen feet wide, that little squiggle right in there.
No, it, it's, we're mixing too many things about
Yeah, we've, we've got, we've got so much we're trying to, trying to represent in this one picture. It, it, it's difficult to visually represent what you're trying to say.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree, this is a complicated little issue, yeah.
But, and, and maybe, maybe there need to be, you know, a couple of different, sort of simplified, in some sense, simplified pictures to illustrate the
That's why we colored it.
Right, clearly illustrate simply the, the new lot boundaries, the proposed lot boundaries.
Yeah.
Three lots.
Yeah, you have to look at the A and R to see where the lot lines are gonna, gonna be, where they are now, where they're gonna be, because we, we moved all the lot lines around.
And as, and as we know from experience on this board, A and Rs are often difficult to read because it's all black and white, and you try to distinguish the existing lot lines and the new lot lines.
Yep.
I, I have on occasion produced a colorized before and after version to try to clarify that.
I think next meeting I'll come in with, with the A and R plans, so you can see where the lines are now, where the lines are proposed to be.
Well, you might
Just, we all understand that.
You might want to submit it to us, so we can look at it ourselves, too.
Well, the, the problem is you've only three, three weeks to review it, and so you might, I don't want to get denied, you know?
Right, so, so I think what we're, what we're, what we're suggesting here is, for the next session of the public hearing, let's, let's get a clearer picture of the, the lot configuration as it is proposed to be.
Okay.
Without, try, try not to have too many confusing lines on the picture.
Sure.
Maybe some photographs, like I'm looking at a Google Maps here, which makes it a little easier, but this is an old photo, so kind of seeing like, what's the access point from East Street, looking onto the property, because I can kind of see what you have for the bridge, but I think this is before you repaired it, so.
One other thing I'd like to point out is, is the dam itself, Massachusetts has a dam safety department, they sent my client a letter of things they'd like fixed on that dam, which he has fixed all of them, except the last item is to cut down the trees, and he's going to be doing that shortly.
Yeah, there's a lot of, it's sort of a lot of moving parts here, but
Yeah.
Yeah, some, you know, some, some, some pictures that really clarify the different topics here.
Yeah, yeah. This'll all just be line work, he's not proposing to do any construction, it's already paved up right up there, but
That's sort of the funny thing about this, is we're not proposing, you're not proposing
Any construction.
The only construction your client wants to do is to, you know, convert the garage into a house.
But we're not asking for that permit right now, but that, that'll come.
Yeah, you're, you're not there yet, you can't
Not there yet.
Can't, you can't, your client can't do that yet until
Right.
Until the A and R is approved, the A and R needs to have access to
Yes.
To both lots.
Yes.
Hence, hence the common driveway.
Exactly, exactly.
I can appreciate the complexity of this, and I can appreciate the difficulty that board members have, you know, sometimes I find it, I, I try hard, I can kind of understand what's going on, sometimes I think I understand it, and I really don't.
No, you understand this one, so I'd like to, any, any other questions, or I'll request the continuance?
While we're here in a public hearing, do we have any other questions or comments from the board?
Well
At this point.
You heard me. I would recommend not continuing to our next meeting.
Oh, you got a busy meeting coming up? You can go two meetings if you'd rather.
Plus, I, I think, I think, I don't know what, I'm not going to try to read your mind, Bob, but I'm going to say that, you know, our next meeting is one week from today.
Oh, no, two meetings.
And, and one week is not likely enough time for you to prepare the, the documentation.
Right, yeah, request the continuance for two meetings from now.
Before continuing, there is someone in the audience that wants to
Yes, if, if, if I've heard everything from the board, is there any, any public comment here? Yes, I see a hand raised in the back room. Please come forward, either sit or stand, whatever you're more comfortable with.
Hi, my name's Yvonne Ashworth, and I own the property at twenty-three East, East Street, sorry, so I do have an interest in what's happening. I've lived there since two thousand and seventeen, when I bought the property, and I can tell you with a hundred percent certainty that that road floods all the time. It doesn't take a hurricane or a tornado, if we get a lot of rain, it spills out over into the street and freezes. It's been a problem continuously since I've been there, and I've had to call the fire department or the highway department to get them to come out and put cones so people slow down, I don't want anyone ending up in my front yard, so that is definitely an issue. I'm not sure from the drawing, it's a little confusing to me where I am, I know that there's a private road that runs alongside my house to the left, if you're looking at the house directly.
Yeah, I think you're to the left of this property, yeah.
Yes.
Because it goes twenty-five on the right, then twenty-three, and then twenty, it must be twenty-three to the left. That's, that's another problem, is figuring out where these numbers are proved to be somewhat challenging, and I don't think I did.
Twenty-three.
You're twenty-three rare, heading away from Shrewsbury, on East Street, twenty, it's twenty-three rare is right next to you, and then it's this property right on the other
Correct, so that's me in the blue, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it was my understanding that the road that runs alongside my house is my property, I know that there's an easement so that people can pass, so my concern is that behind me at twenty-one East, East Street, there, I don't know what the zoning is back there, but there are several buildings and several companies that rent that property, so what I thought was going to be kind of a nice quiet street on the cemetery is not that. There are, you know, complicated machinery and trucks going back and forth every day on that little side street. So I, my concern is that if there's a shared driveway, which I'm assuming is at the back of where I am, the back of my property line, that it's just going to add to this, noise and traffic and more.
I have no idea whi, which properties and which roadway and whatnot from this.
That's me, the little blue guy.
Yeah, and the proposed shared driveway is on East, on East Street, it's not on that.
It's got nothing to do with my property at all, it sounded like it was at the back, okay.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't make head nor tails of the drawing, so.
You're not the only one.
I'm just a nurse, I don't know that much about property lines, but I couldn't figure it out, and I thought, oh, no, no, I can't have more trucks going in and out of mine.
I will, just, just for your knowledge as well, with that twenty-one East Street that you mentioned, the, the trucks, the current zoning of that property is the same as yours, it's R forty, you know, residential. I don't, I do not know if there's, like, pre, if it was a pre-existing use before it became that, and that's why it's still allowed to do that, but I'm just, that's what
Yeah, I, I don't know, since I've gotten there, it just got super, super busy.
You could ask the zoning officer.
Yeah, okay, all right, I just wanted to make my concerns heard, you know, about more, currently, there's a lot of traffic over there to begin with, so, thank you.
And thank you for making it out here, even when you're sick.
Oh, you saw my comment?
I did.
Appreciate it.
All right, any other comments from the public, from the board?
So our next meeting beyond would be the twenty-fifth, I think.
Yes, November twenty-fifth would be
November fourth, then the twenty-fifth, then December ninth.
That's four weeks from now.
That's fine.
Probably, probably be enough time, yes.
You, you know about the form.
Thank you.
And if you, if you need a board member's eye on the plans, help, help
Are you happy to look at it?
I'd, I'd be happy to look at it ahead of time. How about your panel? To, to the extent that my eyes might help produce, produce a picture that hopefully we can all comprehend.
Mr. Chair, for me, yeah, so I, I, yes, I think will be, I, that was one of my comments as well in my memo, which I, I, I would like, I have a, a lot of comments that I outlined in my memo that I would also like addressed, in, in the typical format that we do our peer reviews.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of moving parts with this, and it's all there, so.
So in, in addition to a, a picture that is easier for the board to understand, there's a lot of other stuff that
There may be a need for multiple drawings with a narrative, this is blah, 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 and then this is the, you know, and
Yes, that, that thought occurs to me, some, sometimes when you try to put everything on one picture, it's
Did they say November?
Too difficult.
Yeah, well, there aren't enough different kinds of lines.
So I will move that the board grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing to November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven thirty P. M.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger?
Aye.
Mr. Dalamoli?
Aye.
Mr. Van Katraman?
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Earth of Rebo.
Well, Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried by a board of, board in favor, none against, one abstention.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor.
Okay, motion carried unanimously, by all.
Keep in mind the possibility that this might involve a field visit.
Yes, it could, it could be helpful for the board to actually eyeball what's on the ground, sometimes it's a lot easier to see what's going on with your own two eyes.
Excellent, okay, next on our agenda is the continuation of the public hearing on the request for a special permit and site plan approval at Twelve Centennial Drive and several other addresses. I don't need to repeat at this point, so where are we at with this, Fiona?
Sure, so, thanks, Mr. Chair, so we are getting pretty close, I would say, there, I did send the applicant a list of some outstanding concerns that I had based on what I heard, re-listening to the recordings, and some outstanding comments from the, the board, which I believe that they'll be speaking to this evening. I also wanted to just confirm that we did get a couple pieces of correspondence from the traffic peer review folks. I called Bowman today, Bowman did not have any, any concerns. A couple of things I did want to flag and talk through with, with board and the applicant, but I, I'll, I'll save that for later, but, yeah, I do have a list of few items, but because I've relayed those to the applicant prior to the, prior to this meeting this evening, I'll give them an opportunity to speak to it instead of listing off all of them, which can be pretty, take too, take too long, so.
Gentlemen, tell, tell us where you're at and
Sure.
What's left?
Sure, well, I'll get to Ms. Coughlin's memo maybe second. When we were last here, it was still an open issue with regard to parking calculation. We've spent some time with the planner, with the building inspector, to come up with a determination of the right measurement for determining the, and then what parking spaces count essentially. The, the manner of calculate, calculation, pardon me, was to look at that portion of the building located in Grafton physically, which is a little over six hundred, eight thousand square feet, and the total parking space is actually physically located in Grafton, which is six, seven hundred and sixty-five spaces. That leaves a shortfall of forty-six spaces from the requirements, looking at the Grafton to Grafton component. Within the Grafton component, there are three different islands, so to speak, of reserve parking that total a hundred and forty, and the reason they total a hundred and forty is basically to make sure that if one were to look at the quant, on a weighted average on the building, then we would meet that requirement also, so there wouldn't be any question of compliance in the future. So at some point, we're going to, we would ask you to vote for the reserve parking, to authorize reserve parking in that quantity of the forty-six spaces. That set forth a more detail of a letter of October fifteenth we submitted, if you want to take a look at it, glad to answer any questions you have with regard to that. We do have Ms. Coughlin's memo, we have a response, but I didn't dare send it to her at two o'clock in the afternoon, because I knew I was going to have to see her in person tonight, so I didn't want to take that chance, I'll send it tomorrow, but maybe we can just kind of review at at least a high level the responses and where we are, make sure they're adequate. There were questions about some issues, the fire, I don't know if they're, there were open issues from the fire department, whether they had been closed or not, closed down or not, I'm going to ask John Perry from Lang to review those, it was distance of hydrants, the, the nature of the construction of the emergency access road between the, the employee parking and the primary um, the, the nature of the construction of the emergency access road between the, the, um, the employee parking and the primary facility, and then the, the particular requirements for the connections, so John, can you just kind of walk through those if you could?
Good evening, John Perry, from Lang and Engineering. Yeah, correct, Mark, um, on the, we have addressed all those, uh, items. On the, um, truck wash building, within that building will be the fire pump room for the facility, so there's going to be a fire department connection right there where the fire pump is. And we have added a fire hydrant, uh, to the plan set, um, what, which will be on the final plan set. That is within a hundred feet of that fire department connection. Uh, there's another comment, I think, from the fire department themselves, that they wanted a five-inch stores connection with a four-inch reducer because Shrewsbury and Grafton use different, um, hose connections, so they wanted the option. Uh, and our fire protection engineer, I believe, has recently had a, a meeting with the fire department and building commissioners as well to, um, make sure that that is, um, all flushed out, and it is, and that, uh, will be, um, the way it gets constructed. Uh, and then regarding the the access road for, uh, fire trucks and other emergency vehicles, if you recall, when we first submitted back in May, we were going to be using like, uh, like a stabilized grass paver for that roadway. Fire department, um, wanted us to revise that to be, uh, more of a, um, maintainable surface, so we did revise that, um, a while back to be pervious asphalt. So that's a four-inch thick pervious asphalt system over, I believe it's sixteen inches of crushed stone, so that is definitely adequate to handle the, um, the vehicle traffic, and it will be, uh, maintained by the owner, clear of snow, things like that.
The second, uh, question was, uh, related to the water supply protection overlay district. We, uh, our application includes a request for a special permit, uh, under that. I don't know if, if we can pull up the plan for the, um, for the building and try to show you, because only there's, only a small portion of the building is, is in that particular overlay district, um, and it's important as to how it all, um, ties together.
All right, bear with me.
Sure.
Uh, loading, just the regular site, the set of, most recent set of plans?
Sure, just the, the, the one sheet overall site plan.
Oh, okay.
We can probably find, approximate where the line is, even if we can't.
And while she poses, my memory is that the conservation commission has already seen this, the, the plan as related to that area and is giving you order of conditions, I believe?
That's correct, they, uh, if the entirety of the site has been reviewed, it wa- under one comprehensive, uh, notice of intent and order of conditions has issued, so that's in place. Essentially, you might recall what the building looks like, there's a big section in the middle, there's a long pier, so to speak, that goes out into Shrewsbury, and two shorter piers that come out on the Grafton side. Those two shorter piers, uh, and, and that section are within the water supply protection overlay district. Within those areas, there's no particular storage of materials on a, on a regular basis, but it's certainly, so John, you probably can do this better than I can, just to weigh that line kind of.
Which one can you all see to us, probably up here?
If you could zoom, yeah, so this is the line here, it's laying on the site plan, if you zoom out all the way, it would be easiest to see. There you go, it's good. So this dash line, yeah, exactly, comes up through here. That's the, the water supply, uh, protection zoning, so it's everything on the, on the, um, Brook side of that line. So it's a relatively, you know, compared to the rest of the site, a relatively small area.
So the, as I said, there's no permanent storage of hazardous material, it's possible under the broad use of the term in the bylaw, toxic or hazardous materials may pass through there as part of packages in the UPS stream of commerce. UPS does have a listing of prohibited hazardous materials that are going to be part of our response, so obviously those won't be part of it. And that's why we applied for it. Some of it frankly is a little bit of being conservative. The way your bylaw is set up for the overlay district is you've got a list of permitted uses, a list of prohibited uses, and a list of specially permitted uses. And if you don't hit fall in any of those, it's a little hard to say where you are. But, you know, if you then could potentially default to the idea that if it's not mentioned it's prohibited, we wanted to make sure that we qualified for something. And so that's why we applied under that section for that particular kind of transitory effort. Obviously, the entire site and the project involves hazardous materials. Uh, there are, there's a fueling station, uh, the truck wash station, those are all physically located in Shrewsbury, governed by Shrewsbury, are quite a distance from the water supply, you know, in a lateral nature. We're glad to provide any information, you know, for, for your purposes, uh, as far as that, but we're going to, we expect some fairly specific, uh, uh, conditions of approval relating to those structures of the operation as part of the Shrewsbury approval. Any questions on that?
Just a kind of a comment on the water supply protection, as I recall, having, uh, being one of the people who was involved in creating that zone, our, our concern was much more with the hazardous materials that would be used and stored there as opposed to anything that might be in transit through.
I'm going to need to be reminded about what, what we can or can't and do in this and what we need to do, but maybe at some point along the way.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll make sure that that what happens within the district, that, that we've reviewed that carefully with, with respect to the, uh, that section of the bylaw.
Yeah, cause I think the overlay district usually comes up, there's a building, you're going to put it there and, or whatever distance, and, uh, are you going to have stuff, can be a problem there.
Yeah.
This is a little different.
Yeah, the concern is, you know, basically two things, one, we want to make sure that we can recharge the water table underneath there, and two, that bad stuff doesn't get in, it's recharging.
Right. And to your point, Mr. Hassinger, what the bylaw basically provides is there are certain circumstances in which you can have toxics and ha- toxic and hazardous materials there, but they'll all fall under the, the purview of a special permit, so they would deal with conditions of approval such as containment, suppression, you know, backup, if, if you had a tank, for example, of material. That, nothing of that nature is in the regular operation, things may pass through, and that way, we just wanted to make sure there's no question as how we could use, utilize the site.
Yep.
You would ask some questions regarding the truck washing station, uh, which is in Shrewsbury, but it's, it's obviously a fair, uh, question. Um, the, the design of the facility uses the, for washing, uh, usually about sixty of the, the brown vehicles that you're familiar with seeing in your neighborhood on a daily basis, and about a hundred tractor trailers go through. Uh, it does use a water reclamation system, um, that, um, basically recirculates about fifteen thousand gallons of water a day. If it didn't have that, it would be about three times that as far as the water use, use of that. And that water use is supplemented by a rain harvesting system that has a, a tank that stores up to two thousand gallons, therefore reduces the use of, um, of water. Water is provided to the site, uh, even though it's physically in Shrewsbury by the Grafton Water District pursuant to agreements with the Water District. Ms. Coughlin asked questions about how trash was being handled, there are compactors that are on the building noted on the site plans, all trash is private, um, in every fashion. There were some small questions on the sound, we'll get Epsilon to provide a final report so we can wrap up those points, um, for the record. Traffic, um, we just, as Ms. Coughlin indicated, uh, M D M provided a response earlier this week. Bowman was kind enough to look at it quickly, turn around and respond. I don't know if Bob Micho's online, and maybe he, if he can give you a summary as to what that, uh, explains, and then we can talk about one, the one open item there, so.
Yeah, Bob is on, he's raised his hand.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair. Bob Micho, M D M Transportation Consultants, really, there were only two, uh, points that peer review raised and we responded to. They're essentially both related to monitoring. Uh, the provisions of the monitoring program have been laid out in our response, and they're consistent with what Bowman had suggested happen. Their specificity as to when, uh, the monitoring would occur and the protocols for that monitoring, so in, in short, what it would entail, and this is very much, um, in sync with the anticipated phased occupancy of the building over time, uh, is that the first monitoring, uh, would occur at twelve months, uh, another at thirty-six, and then another at sixty months. And, uh, the protocol would, would have us, uh, measuring traffic activity at the site, uh, for each of seven days, seven continuous days, uh, at, at the site driveways, uh, and then major connecting points to the site. That would be, uh, Centec Boulevard at, uh, Centennial Drive, for instance, and then, um, the truck access at Centec Boulevard. To the extent that the monitoring indicated a deviation from the trip generation that the traffic report relies on in the assessment, then there is, um, a potential expansion of that study area to include additional locations. For instance, uh, either end of Centec Boulevard, or I should say Route thirty, Pine Street, and, and Route twenty in Centec Boulevard. And to the extent beyond that, that there's more than a five percent change in overall intersection volumes in any other location, those would be included as part of an expanded monitoring area. We don't anticipate that the project would generate or exceed the threshold that would require that more extended or expanded monitoring area. As the board might recall, we produced an analysis of the study that relies on two trip estimates. One is empirically based, based on the actual operations of UPS at its other, very similar facilities, uh, in the United States. And the second set of analysis relied on what's known as the industry standard trip rates, or trip rates that are published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I T E. Uh, the I T E rates are about twice what we expect will happen, uh, based on actual operating information for UPS. Uh, so the analysis using the higher standard, the I T E standard, indicates that there's ample capacity to support the project, uh, subject to certain mitigation actions that have been outlined and committed to by the, by the proponent, so. Yeah, uh, uh, so in, in short, uh, we've, we've identified that in the response. Bowman has agreed that that's an appropriate response and protocol. The other point beyond monitoring had to do with, um, provision of, um, certain restrictions, I'll call them, on, um, on, uh, how employees use local roadways. And that comment, what really stemmed from a comment on the Shrewsbury side that related to Cherry Street, which is a local street that eventually connects back out to Route one forty. Shrewsbury had expressed concern that, um, trucks, to the extent they could avoid that route because it is a local roadway, should be, uh, encouraged to do so. Uh, and even for employee trips, that, that particular connection to Centec Boulevard from Cherry Street provided a more direct connection as opposed to other major routes like Route one forty. So the nature of the comment that Bowman issued had to do with encouraging and advising employees, and particularly those who would be, uh, driving package trucks, to avoid, uh, local routes in favor of more significant routes like Route twenty, Route one forty. And UPS is certainly willing to do that, but those issues rest on the Shrewsbury side, not really on the Grafton side. Bowman did not expressly, um, point out the need to restrict truck, um, uh, truck routes, but I know that there was a concern and a question raised as to whether or not there could be some provision for encouraging trucks, particularly the commercial trucks, the articulated tractor trailers, uh, to avoid using Grafton streets, Route thirty in particular. And to that extent, um, the commitment, uh, that UPS has before the board is to place signage on the truck driveway at the exit point that would indicate and, and provide wayfinding, if you will, for tractor trailers to turn left toward Route twenty, to use that as the preferred regional route. Uh, so that's, uh, that's something that, uh, UPS is willing to do and commit to. There's no way to legally, uh, uh, stop commercial trucks from using Route thirty, but, um, there are certain, certainly ways to advise and encourage and provide appropriate wayfinding to direct those larger vehicles to, uh, arterial roadways within Shrewsbury, which as a matter of fact, uh, happened to be a little bit more direct, uh, to get to those regional destinations anyway. So those really wrapped up the peer review commentaries, and I believe that there's a clean letter now from Bowman that, uh, corroborates, or, you know, indicates their agreement with how we've responded. Glad to answer any questions on either of those points.
Um, I just wonder about trucks leaving this wanting to go to the turnpike, that's probably the, the biggest, uh, concern. If they take twenty, um, is the interchange with one, uh, one twenty-two, um, adequate for these trucks?
Well, it, it currently serves that purpose, um, so the Hartford Avenue facility that UPS currently operates relies on that route. So I don't think there's an impediment, um, to that, I think there would be a continued use of it for that purpose. If you plug in GPS and you do a test of this, I think the, uh, preferred route, the route that would, would show up on the mapping would be the Route twenty to one twenty-two, uh, and Pike connection. And I believe that that's the route that is currently used.
Thing is, that ramp off of twenty around up to, um, one twenty-two, is very, very tight, and, uh, the bigger trucks, I don't know, I don't drive them, but they don't look all that comfortable with the, the number I see there now, so anyway, okay.
Of course, there would be other connections to, um, four ninety-five, Route nine, et cetera, you know, I think there's, among the available connections to regional routes, uh, Route thirty falls in the lower rung of, of, of preference, frankly. Um, I think there are more efficient, more direct ways, uh, not only through the Pike connection that we just described, but also from, from the Route nine side and the four ninety-five side that would come to play. So I, well, we, we've made some statements that, um, trucks, if they did use the Route thirty quarter, the volumes would be relatively modest, frankly. I think that the vast majority of those trucks are going to be more inclined naturally to use those other regional connections.
Possibly a, of big tangent, but Mr. Donahue, does UPS currently employ, do any subcontracting with third parties as far as driving their articulated trucks, or is it all direct UPS employees? Or directly contracted by UPS individually? Do you, are you aware?
I don't know, I don't think that they retain third parties, but it could be that this facility would be a point of entry for somebody who is, wants packages distributed.
Yeah.
So that, you know, a, a vendor might load, uh, an entire, you know, customer loads, they go into a number of places and bring up here for distribution of the UPS system, that I don't know.
Yeah, the, the only reason I was thinking of it is because I know there are some trucking companies that employ relatively low skilled people that I've seen have those types of trucks in more accidents from turning in bad, you know, tight radius type turns and causing damage that I would like to avoid necessarily, but that's not so much a UPS direct problem, this is a curiosity of mine.
I, I'd be assuming, and there's problems anytime one makes an assumption, but, um, it, it, last year became pretty clear that United Parcel Service, you know, has a, um, a deep relationship with the Teamsters. And so I wouldn't think that many other, uh, non-Teamster drivers would be there, and part of what the Teamsters bring is a certain skill set, um, to. And part of what the Teamsters bring is a certain skill set, particularly their driving force. And maybe more importantly, accountability.
Absolutely.
But the point's well taken.
Do your trucks, your big trucks, fit under the bridge in Westboro?
No, no, no trucks fit under the bridge in Westboro.
Speaking of driver skills.
Occasionally seen some interesting situations here in Grafton, but hopefully, I don't believe any of them involve UPS trucks.
Not that I'm aware of.
While we're while we're on traffic quickly, at the last hearing, I thought there was mention of maybe a little bit more support from this project for the intersection at Pine and 30. Is that still something that you're working on or?
We're working diligently on it. I don't have an answer this evening. We fully expect to have an answer that we'll be able to tell you before we're here on the 4th, for sure, to see what else we can basically squeeze out of it in some fashion. The question had put whether there are any more site plan revisions. The set, I think by the draft, the last set is dated September 6th. Does that sound right?
There were, there were some minor revisions on the 27th. There was a couple of sheets.
Okay.
That were got issued with our, sorry, this should be up here.
Yeah, I believe I believe there's a few plan sheets issued with, I believe the date of the 27th in that was to respond to some of the Graves comments, but it wasn't the full set. So we and we have the draft decision. I'm in the process of just kind of coordinating everything you had listed there, Fiona, with what we had submitted to make sure that just, you know, you've got all the the latest and greatest renditions.
Yes.
So, yes, John, maybe the a final complete set with the some of the fire comments that you discussed earlier? Because you're already planning on turning that in, so maybe we can just merge these sheets, so it's it's one?
Yeah, that works.
Comes around, yeah. Okay, great.
There will be a revision to the entirety of the plan set. It will not be relate to the Grafton property. The site butts land owned by the town of Shrewsbury. We've asked the town of Shrewsbury for an easement. The town meeting authorized it in the spring. The town has put out an RFP. We have a successful bid of the RFP. We're in the process of documenting that easement. When we get that plan in is a little bit hard to say right now, whether we catch it in this round or have to go back and modify in Shrewsbury. We've drafted a proposed condition of approval that would make it clear that that plan modification being in Shrewsbury would not have to come through this board process that we'd ask you to consider just, you know, we, I think the condition provides that you'll be given, you know, evidence of the ultimate approval by Conservation and Planning Board in Shrewsbury. But it doesn't serve a lot of purpose to be doing the dual jurisdictions for something that's only in Shrewsbury.
I think I would just say as part of that, just a submit the plan to Grafton just to have, you know, for sure. Just to articulate that in case it wasn't part of it.
Once it's finally approved, I would think we would we'd be required to submit the final approved plan rather than the iterations and all the reports that go with it.
That'd be my expectation.
Yep. Does the, do the conditions say that's gotta be finalized and accomplished before our permit allows you to go ahead?
No, no.
Because you don't have the the access?
We have access on our property. The current set of plans show access within our boundaries.
Okay.
This would be an alternative access.
I remember now. Thank you.
Yeah. And then finally, Ms. Coughlin had asked about construction sequencing. We reviewed that in some detail with the Grafton Conservation Commission. Have a plan that shows, I think it's either five or six segments of the sequencing. Breaks it down pretty clearly, so we'll submit that and maybe I'll be able to review it with you on the 4th, just to make sure there are no questions. So I think those are the open questions that we had to deal with. I mentioned one condition of approval that we are asking for that's a little bit different. There's one other one that's worth discussing in particular, and that's hours of operation during construction period. The 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, six days a week, no Sundays, no holidays, is generally not a problem. We're asking that in the event that circumstances defined or particular circumstances require to work outside of those periods of time, that it could be done with the approval of the Planning Director and the Chief of Police. There's two particular components to that in which it makes good sense for everybody that it happened off hours. It's deliveries of large pieces of equipment and steel, because it's traveling on public ways and it's better to do it at 3:00 in the morning than 3:00 in the afternoon. And the second is the pore of the floor, which is essentially an extremely large sheet of concrete. So you need, since right now there's no plan to build a temporary batching facility on site, that means you could need a convoy of trucks that you can't afford to get stuck in traffic. Is basically what it ends up being, because then it all stops working. Those are the two circumstances that when they arise, we'd know with specificity what days they are, what the hours are, the expectation, can work with the police department to make sure it all works, keep the planning department. Those would be the only exceptions that we can see. And we've asked to just add that as a condition of approval, that that authority could happen, so.
The convoy of trucks be on 20 or any of it in Grafton? You don't you don't know.
Well, you've got a concrete provider in Grafton, so I don't know how they get there, so, right? If they were the bidders.
What you just described going from that concrete provider is going through all of those problem roads.
Yeah. I mean, it's 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 gonna go to bids, obviously, so.
Yeah, but in any case, you're pouring a huge floor. You're gonna get that all done as quickly as possible. So it's like one day, one night.
Yeah, John has talked before. He's, he does it, so.
Yeah, it's an incredibly large facility, so typically we'll we'll set it up into sequence pores. As they bid it out to the different concrete providers, they're usually able to only supply a certain amount of concrete in in a certain day anyways, because they're committed to not only our site, but other projects and things. So we'll break out the sites. We'll know the exact days. We'll plan it with the weather. And to Mark's point, also to the benefit of the town, when you start these pores, it's really early in the morning, so that you're completing the pore by the time your morning traffic starts.
Yeah, I think if you're going through North Grafton, North Main Street, that's gonna stir people up and we're gonna have problems because they're gonna complain. So I think public communication is gonna be important.
Yeah, communication, coordination, and again, limited to as as few instances as possible.
We can build a preferred route into the bid.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a very large town. I mean, most trucks will timeout in about 40 minutes, 45 minutes. So you've gotta get it from wherever it is and get it into the, you know, site by then, so.
I understand the need, but I'm talking about that that strip, that section on North Main Street and immediately in the vicinity is already maybe the worst traffic spot we've got. And the people along it are somewhat sensitive.
Yes, sir.
One one comment from me on that North Main Street route anyway is if the concern is these trucks can't sit idle in a single spot for very long and or they mess up the situation, the railroad can cross at any time of day.
Oh, yes.
They could take up that intersection for several minutes, you know, fairly long periods of time on some cases.
People claim a half an hour.
So the the likelihood of them trying to use that that path, if with the railroad as a consideration, is probably lower.
Yeah, but in any case, it's a point to keep in mind that that if if it so happens that you're you're using a concrete provider who is going to be crossing railroad tracks, that the railroad needs to be included in the coordination of that.
As a general idea, I don't think I have any concerns with that condition.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's it's the reality of how you have to do the construction. You know, and I appreciate the the importance of doing it off hours so that there are as so that it can be done as quickly as possible with with minimal disruptions. But yeah, to Bob's point, public awareness is a significant part of that. Coordination of the police and the planning department will help with that.
Yeah, that's a segue into the discussions with the folks at 15 Centennial Drive, the extruders. We had some discussion in the hallway some time ago. We haven't really formalized it in any fashion. What we've committed to with the general contractor, who we're fortunate enough has already been selected, is advance notice even more than is required by the regulations to them to make sure that the scheduling of blasting and any, you know, hardcoreing of material out there can be coordinated with them. And if they've got a particular operation they've got to complete, then we'll figure out how to make sure that we're not interfering with each other. And that'll probably be best done, you know, when somebody knows exactly when things are supposed to happen. So we've got their contact information. We pass it on to the general contractor. We're gonna build it into the requirements for that type of notice. So we'll be in touch with them before we start, particularly the blasting activity, so.
Anything else from the board?
No, finally, I mean, we have the benefit of the draft decision, which we thank. There's there's nothing abhorrent in there that, you know, we didn't, you know, half expect. I think there's some fine tuning such as the post occupancy, you know, traffic monitoring that you heard from Mr. Micho and the like. So we'll caucus with Ms. Coughlin. I think we can clean most of that up and bring it to you, you know, pretty clean.
And just to be clear, Fiona, you are have started work on drafting a decision and and having the applicant review that. So we're on, we're we're kind of on the way at least to having a decision to review in the near future.
Yeah, and Mr. Cherry, so, yeah, I mean, obviously, that that discussion is still unfolding about what that will look like. But yeah, like a baseline draft with some conditions for preliminary review was was sent out. I, you know, just a recommendation from me and to touch on what Mark just said, you know, the the monitoring program did shift a bit, Bob, since the last peer review correspondence. And I just, what is the flexibility that the board would have with tailoring that or adjusting that monitoring program as needed? I think, you know, we've hearing this evening that some concerns about specific intersections that we do did need to open it up to, you know, Waterville Street intersection at some point in the future. You know, that would, I think that would be of interest here. And I do, one other comment is that I do believe that there originally it was suggested, you know, annual monitoring. Now it's it's changed the three, at the three year mark and then the five year mark. So just wanted to 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 call that out as well. I mean, it's, again, you know, I did, I talked to Bowman and they didn't have any problems and that's in the record. But I just, for this, I want the board to consider some of the changes that were made and how they really want want the monitoring program to look and and also get a confirmation from Bob this evening. You know, the, how having to open that up should problems arise.
Yeah, I I think that there's certainly room to to refine that program. I think the intention was to monitor at appropriate phases of building occupancy is the best way to put it. The at the 12 month mark, that would provide sufficient runway or timeline for UPS to operate in a way that's normalized. And there is a provision in there that requires that we inventory or monitor during a peak season of operation of the facility. So the idea would be, depending on when the facility opens, that within a 12 month period of that date, that we perhaps look at the highest activity period for the building during that first 12 month period, you know, so that we're we're appropriately capturing the peak activity of the building, right? Subsequent to that, the building will be occupied at a higher level over time. And it wouldn't necessarily make sense to monitor annually if the building occupancy really hasn't materially changed from from one year to the next. So I, there is certainly room to modify that that program. I don't think there would be resistance to doing that, but I think that the mechanisms for monitoring should be tied to some degree to the to the actual percent utilization of the building so that we're not over monitoring or producing the same results over and over again.
If it's, if it's there, I haven't read it. What happens? How does the monitoring get reviewed and what happens if there's a problem?
I might start by suggesting first that the monitoring is intended to determine whether or not the trip generation characteristics of the building are at or below what was evaluated in the traffic report. So there's a threshold issue, right? The first, the first objective of that monitoring is really to understand relative to how the building was analyzed, whether or not we're there, right? Whether or not the the trip estimates were were accurate. Because of the phased approach to occupying the building over time, I don't expect that the initial monitoring of the building is going to be where near what was evaluated in the in the report, which assumes a full highest potential use of occupancy of the building. So the way that the monitoring is structured is to say, look, it will, we'll look at the traffic characteristics of the site over seven continuous contiguous day period at the site driveways to understand it compared to what the traffic report suggested was going to happen, right? Now, in addition to that monitoring at the driveways, we would also look at the principal gateways, if you will. So we have Centennial Drive at Centec Boulevard in Grafton is one of those locations. And then there's the site driveway at Centec Boulevard in Shrewsbury is the other. And in addition to the seven day count periods, we would look very specifically at at those locations during the peak, so-called peak hours, right, 7 to 9, 4 to 6. What what's not explicitly written in here is that the equipment used to do that monitoring would be video based equipment that records the activity for every hour of the day over that seven day period, right? So there's gonna be a visual and a data record of all of the activity that would be generated specifically by the site over an extended period of time. So that information could be used to corroborate that the peak hours of the facility and its highest level of impact of the public roadways occurs during certain hours of the day. We expect that to be between 7 and 9 in the morning and 4 and 6 in the afternoon. In addition to the volume, we would be simply surveying the the employees to determine what mode of transportation they've used. There is a TDM program that's been outlined in the traffic study that, you know, encourages alternative travel modes. The MBTA is very nearby. There are sidewalk connections to the T. There'll be information provided to employees on T schedules. There'll be provision of bike facilities and accommodations within the property, preferential parking for those who carpool. A series of those all outlined in the traffic report that would allow us during the monitoring period to survey the actual commuting trends of the employees and be able to compare. That is one component of 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 activity for the site to say, you know, if trip generation is higher than we expected, perhaps, you know, there are other ways to incentivize the use of alternative transportation modes. So so that's the the data driven piece of this. Now, as you read more into the specific suggested program in in our response, you'll see that that monitoring would occur 12 months following occupation of the building and again at 36 months and 60 months, right? So those were periods that we felt were appropriate and that during the first year of operation, that would allow the facility, you know, to to get its feet under it, so to speak, right, to to normalize operations. It will be functioning well below its actual capacity. There'll be increased occupancy of the building over time. So that first monitoring period really is going to establish the first baseline of of, of activity that we could measure and compare to the traffic report. And we don't expect it will be anywhere near, you know, peak, peak operation, but we'll start there. We believe that within three years of occupancy, that there'll be sufficient use, additional use of the building, that it would warrant another period of monitoring. And then at, at five years, that would, in our estimation, can represent, you know, the full potential occupancy of the, of the site. So that's, that's where those came from. Those can certainly be adjusted or tied to building occupancy if the board felt compelled to be more specific about, you know, percent utilization of the building, to, to fine tune when those occur. But I think 12, 36, and 60 are not unreasonable.
Sorry to cut in, but I think the question was more about, not the methodology, but what happens if the reading is beyond the threshold, right? And I'm reading a bit further here. And I think it's saying, you know, to work with MassDOT in Shrewsbury, but that the applicant is really not responsible for providing any more assistance in the event that the reading is outside the threshold. Is that true?
Yeah, so we'll start with what the traffic study shows using the more conservative trip estimates. It shows that there is no more than a 5% change in any location in Grafton beyond Pine Street or Route 30. We addressed that in response to peer review. We, and that's based on the higher ITE-based trip estimates. We believe that the actual performance of the building will be far below that. So the likelihood that we'll have to expand and include any additional locations with the Grafton is slim to nil, to be frank.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, I think we're just not connecting.
You're not answering my question, yeah.
What we're talking about is, so we can monitor all we want, but what do we do? Right, like, it's likely that you're, like, no one here has enough know-how to challenge that you're correct or incorrect, right? We're going with the experts on the assessment. But if we're doing all this monitoring 60 months down the line and we find out that there's a problem, I think Bob is, and I are trying to understand, then what does the town of Grafton do to try to address that problem? It's, I think what it's saying here is, you, so, I mean, back to the first part of Bob's question, you, MDM, are gonna conduct these assessments at 12 months, 36 and 60 months?
A qualified engineering company would. Often that would be MDM as a follow-on service. It doesn't have to be.
And who pays, who pays for that?
That would be UPS.
Okay, so you, so, all right, so the applicant is paying for these assessments, but the applicant's not responsible for anything beyond that if a problem is discovered? That's what I'm reading here, just to make sure we're...
Well, yes, and I, and I, I'm sorry if I, I had a, you know, I wasn't on the mark with my initial response. I think what I wanted, what I meant by my initial response was that we don't believe that there'll be any need to study beyond the site driveways, frankly, once this opens and any of the monitoring provisions, because we wouldn't have generated more than a 10% increase in projected traffic activity from the site compared to the traffic report. So it becomes a moot point.
Well, I think though, to the members' question, you know, if it's not moot, what's the response? And I think what maybe the language needs to be bolstered is what would expect it to happen would be a, another look at the TDM program so as to try to manage it and also look operationally at how, what the time of the, of the issue is and whether shift changes could change that in some fashion, you know? So it's, you'd be doing those type of things.
And what happens if those measures fail and we still have a problem?
I guess it depends on where the problem is and what the options are to fix it, you know?
Well, does it? I'm not satisfied. Oh, and I couldn't make out, I don't remember. Does this include Pine Street and Route 30?
The, the way it's...
One of the places it's monitored?
Right, through the chair. It could if the site generates more than 10% additional trip activity beyond what's reported in the traffic report. The traffic report, the basis for the mitigation of the traffic report dictates, you know, what needs to be studied after the fact. If we're within the assumptions of the traffic report, there wouldn't be a need to do any further evaluation of, or study. It, it doesn't mean that there aren't, or it won't be other projects that would continue to contribute traffic to those locations and that those locations could, you know, ultimately need some other form of mitigation, right? But it wouldn't be the responsibility or the purview of UPS to undertake those improvements or further evaluate those types of needs. So I, I guess what I'm saying is the traffic study dictates, based on what we've analyzed, the nature of the mitigation, and so long as we're within the bounds of that, it wouldn't be a need or an obligation or a warrant or a need for UPS to participate in additional mitigation or study.
I don't know whether you said that this monitoring in the plan that you're putting forward will include the intersection that I mentioned. Will it or will it not?
It, it will not if, if the survey of the site driveways and the, and the trips associated with the site are less than predicted in the traffic report.
What, which survey is this?
If I might, I, I think what Mr. Micho's saying is that the study is, is essentially one that becomes iterative. The study starts at the two driveways for the site and a determination as to whether the volume of traffic in and out of the site itself is consistent with what has been modeled and reviewed by Bowman. If it is consistent as far as volume's concerned, that's the end of the analysis is because it is consistent with what everybody has...
And, and you don't go out to the intersections and make measurements?
Correct. If, if the traffic counts exceed those that are in the plan by more than 10%, then you go out further to determine the impact, where that impact is of that additional 10%. And what, whether, and you evaluate the source of that impact because there could be other developments obviously impacting any particular intersection and then come up with mitigative steps as to that particular intersection.
When that happens, would it include the intersection I'm interested in?
Sure, yes, it would. If, if you, if your question is if the volume of traffic at the site exceeds 10, 10, is 10 more, 10% more than what is modeled, then I would think Pine Street and Route 30 would be one of the intersections that would be then studied for the impact of that increase in traffic.
Does, well, the, the decision should reflect that.
Sure.
But I'm... I'm, I'm thinking about sitting here with a room full of people screaming about the traffic in North Grafton and what can we do about it? We've got some other, what can we do about it's going on right now in town? With the answer, nothing. And rather not us, I'd rather us try to avoid another one like that.
It, it's a fair effort to avoid it, so we appreciate that. Just to kind of rewind to make sure to set the table, we've looked at what, as to that particular intersection, the proportional impact is. We've offered a contribution that's double that as far as total reconstruction. You've asked us to relook at that. We are in the process of relooking at it. We're gonna come back with you. But I think as to if you were asked by that from a room full of people, you know, one of the responses would be that, you know, developments that are coming in are paying their proportional part and, you know, we have to recognize that it's an issue for the entire town also.
Fiona, did you have anything more to, any other points that need to be followed up on?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring up while we're talking about it, there's a comment later on as well about restriping, you know? I would, I would recommend the board, you know, review that and see what we can do to, to, like, what you can do to bolster that. It's, it's, it's kind of suggested, but if, what I'm reading in the correspondence, it seems like we're going to need that and I just, you know, our town staff, like, we are limited capacity, so just something to consider. It's, let me get to that comment.
I remember seeing it.
It's further down somewhere. Yeah, the final comment here.
In the Bowman reply?
Yeah. Because I've had conversations with the DPW director and, you know, whatever, whatever help and support they can get is appreciated.
So that's all we have to present. We would hope to be in a position to close the hearing on your next meeting, if you can fit us in the agenda on November 4th. Hope to be in a position where you can vote.
So there's, there's some documentation that's still in the works.
Yep.
Which hopefully we would receive by the end of this week.
You're gonna receive this reply letter tomorrow.
Good, even better. So as long as we have, you know, all the updated documentation to review in advance of the meeting next Monday? And if there, if no, no further questions come up?
The one for me is that our side has to say, yep, but they satisfactorily reserve, resolved all of that, not it's coming in a little while. So there isn't much time, Friday, Town Hall closes at noon. And how you're gonna get, you've gotta be sure that, I think Fiona knows what I want.
Yeah, I mean, you guys can, you guys can coordinate with Fiona to make sure that all the ducks are in a row as much as possible.
Yep.
And the board has enough time to review the material prior to the Monday meeting. And worse comes to worse, we can punt it off to another meeting if we absolutely have to, but...
It did sound like you have the final updates for the plans basically done already, just needs to be coalesced into one set anyway, so it'd be easier to have it on file, I think, for the final plan before we close, but...
If I can, Mr. Chair, yeah, I, I'd like to, to just request a confirmation. So I think it was said earlier that site, site plan, revised site plans will be submitted, but we also will be getting future iterations based on the easement conversation in Shrewsbury. Did I understand that correctly? So we'll get one final set for our hearing and then...
Yeah, I, I think what you asked for was a new set with a new current date that could be the set of plans for approval.
For us to be able to...
What we would then submit for your record is when the modification in Shrewsbury, if it were to allow the relocation of the driveway, once that was approved by the planning board and the Conservation Commission, we put it in a package with the approvals with those final plans, so you'd have them as part of your package.
Okay.
Yeah, so as far as we're concerned, we will have one complete set of plans to base our decision on. We will expect to receive for our information...
Correct.
Plans that may be revised to reflect what happens on the Shrewsbury side.
Right, and that, that plan set that your approval will be based upon will be the same plan set Shrewsbury approval will be based on. So, you know, everybody who inspects the site will be working off of one set of plans.
Yep, yes.
If I may, I, to, to the chair, to Mr. Donahue. So the, and you mentioned earlier that MassDOT will be providing further information that will be reflected in, in that plan set or...
No.
Okay.
No, no, MassDOT won't have any impact on that plan set at all.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I got that straight. But we are, but we are waiting on feedback from, from them regarding...
We are waiting for feedback from them so that we can understand their position and be more responsive to the requests of both towns that we bolster our traffic mitigation. But that, our willingness and ability to do that is dependent upon what MassDOT's determination is as to a permit route. And so it's a little bit of chicken and the egg.
Right, yeah.
We hope they kill the chicken this week too, so, which will leave us the egg.
All right, just wanted to make sure. And then you'll, you'll provide that response with the water supply protection overlay info that we discussed?
Yes, that's all.
Yeah, okay, great.
Have all of that in the sequencing plan, so you can refer, if you want to refer exhibits, that's fine.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, everybody understand what's expected to be done between now and next week?
We do.
I do.
Is there anything else?
I believe I heard Mr. Donahue request a continuance till November 4th at 7:30 PM.
Please.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hesinger.
Aye.
Mr. Dallamoli.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins' votes, I motion carried unanimously. See you in a week. And the expectation is, is there an expectation of having a draft decision at that point?
I do what I'm told, so...
I will, I will say I would not expect it, but it would be welcome if it was, could then discuss if we...
I think there's a lot of balls in the air to try to accomplish that. If she does.
So let's, let's, let's assume, so let's assume that we may be in a position to close the hearing next week, may or may not be in a position to review a draft decision.
All right.
Thank you.
And if we don't review a draft decision next week, we should, every reason to expect we could do that on the 28th.
It'd be a good reason to be thankful.
Twenty...
28th is Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
25th.
Twenty...
20-something.
20-something.
Do it at your house.
The week is Thanksgiving.
25th.
Yes, I think the 25th works better than the 28th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Missed the estimates of...
Yes, so...
Do we have any bills?
I believe we have some bills.
I move that we authorize payment of the bills.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hesinger.
Aye.
Mr. Dallamoli.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins' votes, I motion carried unanimously. Do we have a staff report?
I can give a quick one, yeah. So, um, just, I sent an email out to, to the board, but we have ADU peer-to-peer workshop tomorrow. It is at, in the afternoon at 1 o'clock, which I know is tough for people, but we will have another one in November in the evening, talking through the housing bond bill, trying to continue to have open dialogue about what to expect. Planners will be there, Housing Trust, planning boards, anyone who's interested in, in the law and what is required for compliance. So I encourage anyone on the board that can make it to come and any members of the public that are interested to, I would post it on Facebook and we've shared it as much as possible. It's on our planning page too, but I'm happy to provide that link to anybody who needs it. So that's the major thing. The past three weeks since we met prior has been a lot of kind of decision writing and kind of the, the regular day-to-day stuff, but we, we obviously, we had town meeting and there was some prep involved, involved with that, that kind of took up some time. But we, we, we did find out that we got the grant for the traffic study for the common. So that was awesome, happy about that. So that will, that's the MDI grant, which is an awesome grant opportunity for towns because it just takes the town out of the middle and there's like no match requirement for us. So it's really nice. It is really nice. Trying to come up with those match requirements for grants is tricky. Other than that, we, starting office assistant interviews tomorrow. We have a lot of candidates, we have, I believe, five. So we'll be doing that and hopefully get somebody in that'll be...
That's promising.
Yeah, it's really exciting, so happy about it. I think I can stop there, unless anyone has any questions or needs anything.
Questions? Alright, any anybody find anything in the correspondence that caught their eye?
The first, the first item.
Nothing that is really relevant to the planning board directly, but there's a copy of the um, EP. EPA, I believe it is, no.
Uh, Master EP.
Master EP, thank you, their their lawsuit as well as the preliminary um, order from the courts.
I don't know whether it was an order or whether it was an agreement between the parties.
My understanding was it was an agreement between the parties that was then such ordered by the court.
Okay, didn't see that piece of paper. I have, I have questions about all other possibilities out there um, to look at, but. Not tonight.
Alright, any reports from planning board representatives on town committees and CMRPC? I can report briefly, I hope, on the Open Space and Recreation Committee. For which I am the planning board's representative, the committee met last week. Lose track of time, I must say, I think it was last week, and the committee doesn't have a whole lot of work to do. We completed the, as you all know, the parcel prioritization project, but the committee is now looking at. Parcels of land that the town owns that are currently vacant, they're unprotected open space. Committee will be. Considering whether any of these town-owned empty parcels are deserving of permanent protection as conservation or recreation land. We've only started looking at that, so there may be something more to report on that later, but that's it for. That committee on which I am the complaining words representative, in too many words. Any others? Any other items which may likely come before the board?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second, that would be adjourned, all in, I'd like to say all in favor, Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hessinger.
Aye.
Mr. Dalamoli.
Aye.
Mr. Venkatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins, what's I motion carried unanimously, we are adjourned, thank you all for sticking with us a little bit longer than I thought.
Yeah.